We all know you pretty well. I can tell you, for one thing, you've definitely been a champion for us for fiscal responsibility on the school board. So I'm gonna just go ahead and bring Bill up and let him start off.
I was supposed to say those three points, but I'm gonna drip a little bit. And I'd like to commend, I read it in the Facebook account, you can obviously see that.
Oh yeah, it worked well.
So I'm just, I'm here tonight, next week is gonna be an opportunity for you to hear substantive differences between the different candidates for school board. And what bothers me is that in this election cycle, that's gonna be pretty much always gonna be in August. And so it affects 25% of the growth population are actually stakeholders in the school system. And so I'm thinking it's gonna be a really low turnout. And so we really need to bolster those of you that appreciate that we need quality education and that needs to be at a price we can afford. So I wanna give some, just some basic facts about the school system. Tonight, I'm not again, this is Bill Tobias School Board member, because I'm gonna take a minute to speak to you also as a friend to many of y'all. So here is this year's FDMP form. This is how Lake County and all other counties get funded. And I presented this before, but this is the updated version. The good news is that Lake County is no longer 65th out of 67 counties in funding. The bad news is we're 64th out of 67 counties in funding. Now, on the other side, and this data is available, and I assembled it, it's from various sources, but it gives, for me, I needed something on a spreadsheet that I looked back and looked at the numbers. And that was really prompted by Van Schoen when I first ran two years ago, which is the main responsibility of a board member is to understand the budget and understand the funding. And this is where our funding comes from. Areas that I attacked when I first came into office was transportation and our ESE, and we have narrowed that gap. So I'm pretty proud of that. The reality is now, and this is also great news that never gets published, on this page is our outcome. You hear about this A, B, C, D school rating? Keep in mind 65, or actually 64. An outcome, which I believe is up here, which is over here, our points, that's the term for grade, we're 24th in the state. 24th. So that's money well spent. I'm telling you that when people talk about that things aren't good about Lake County, that isn't truthful. And we are squeezing every dime out of every dollar. Updates on our Engage LCS. Is everybody know what Engage LCS is?
No, go ahead and explain it briefly.
Engage LCS, and again, for those that don't know, I've been on the board for two years. It came, this is a grant that was, it was an $800,000 grant, and it was for our school district to look at itself like it's a business. I made campaign two years ago that our administrator salaries were too high, and to this day, I call for a 10% cut. The consultants right off the bat said, your administrators are paying too much. 53 cents of every dollar we spend goes into the classroom. That is ridiculous. There is no charity that I would give to that that's all that went for his sole purpose, which is to educate children. So your board, existing board, committed over the next three years $30 million that would be redeployed, not raising taxes, but would be redeployed back into the classroom. This budget session, we are, that we're about to approve, $10.1 million is gonna go back in the classroom. And that is looking at efficiencies and in some cases, obviously cuts. But I'll give you an example. We are looking at combining bell schedules. This is now, this is gonna be our $10 million next year, not this year. But next year, we'll save $4.1 million by changing our bell schedules and combining bussing, buses. That I'm still looking at $3.1 million in administrative cuts. That's a slow one. I've got $75,000 so far. But, but being fair, the superintendent listened, and it used to be if you became an assistant principal, you went from a teacher, let's say $30,000, $37,000, you went instantly to $60,000 as an AP. And there was no step. At the last, two budget meetings ago, superintendent introduced a matrix where now there'll be a starting pay and you will get merit pay as you move up. Those are, those are amazing changes for a system that has been, there's been inertia. And what bothers me when I read the newspaper, which most of us get our information from, is the system gets attacked for not doing it sooner. How about we don't look at, look at that? How about we deal with where we are today and where we're going? Okay? The other issue that is, that is fast, is on fast track for us is growth in South Lake County. I proposed at the last workshop, we send a letter to the county commission that we ask for full impact fee for South Lake County for growth. Now, will that happen? It's never happened. So I also asked the wording to be add, or an alternative to fully fund growth. Those are the key words, is, is if you're not gonna grant the cost that it really cost us, and let's talk about that. At the height of our growth in 2006, at most, they received $9,400. They needed $14,000 for a single funding grant. We, we, in this room, accumulated $600 million of debt. Today, as I speak to you, we owe $395 million, $34 million a year. We're paying right now. That debt goes to 2031, by the way. We will need two new schools by 2020. So we better have a plan in place, or I have not served you. I will say that. Recently, we went through, y'all may have read it in the paper, where they came up with the $993 million capital needs also, that should be a bonus issue. I asked the school district to apply a, a standard which is, which would be sustainability on schools. So if you have a school with 200 kids, it's not sustainable. The model for schools is a minimal, minimal. So the days of the small schoolhouse in public education are going to be gone, I'm telling you. Based on that model, they came back $770,000, $770,000. So we dropped $200,000, I'm sorry. We dropped $200 million right off the bat. So it was $773 million instead of $993 million. Then I said, now apply a pay as you go. So with the one cent that we're talking about right now, the one third, with fully funding growth in South Lake, we can pay for all of our capital needs and have $19 million in the bank by 2031. That's the way we need to be thinking, you see? Because the staff was floating the idea of a geo bond, that again, more debt for us. So there is a change in culture, I'm telling you. It has been slowly coming, but I've been proudly part of it for the last two years. That's, that's the reason I'm laying again, is, and this is from the campaigning, I guess. But there needs to be a force of business sense behind it. There's enough warm fuzzy, don't misunderstand. It's all about the kids, but it's also a huge business. And that's what we have to focus, and we have to make sure that we're prudent with our dollars. So, so that's my sort of variety right now. Now I'm gonna go to my, the toughest decision that's going to come up for me is going to, is coming to my death. It is on the agenda to call for a superintendent search. And I want to explain, I'm the swing voter of this, by the way. When I came, I did not ever speak to the superintendent when I was running for office, because I didn't hear anything positive about her. So I didn't wanna be jaded about that. In my business, which I started 32 years ago, when I shake someone's hand, I get a sense about them. And I have been very successful. When I met the superintendent, and we sat for an hour with the first meeting, she is an honest person. I feel very good about her spirit and her character. We go a year and have to do my first evaluation. And when you speak about children and you speak about curriculum, her eyes light up. When you speak about operation, she goes, "Oh." That's okay, because I love designing restaurants, and I have a whole team that does the work behind me. But they're good people. She doesn't have good backup, and we spoke about that. And in my evaluation, I spoke about what I just told y'all, but also about her staff. And ultimately, the school board, the only person accountable is the superintendent, you see? And so in this past year, we had a, a district level staff person bring a contract to us for Ustas Heights that I called $850 million, $850,000, that we were gonna be overcharged for taxpayers. And the superintendent said to me, what would you do? I said, I would fire them. And she did. Now, and her, she has more class than them, she just didn't redo their contract. You'll never see her, she's very quiet, and she never will embarrass the word, and that speaks to her character. So when I said to her, her chief operating officer is weak, when we came back with our maintenance audit, we were gonna save $1 million this year in maintenance, that should be over three years, $1 million in three years. She demoted him last week. Her chief, her assistant superintendent, William Gold, which I gotta tell you, over two years is my go-to to solve problems, she's retiring.
Oh really?
And so the superintendent has to make a choice of that key position. She has to make a choice of her chief operating officer. And for me, that was the time that I would evaluate in November. Her contract's up next year. So in November would have been the time that we do our evaluations, for those key spots to be evaluated, and for me then to make a decision, whether we go for superintendent search. Not next month. That's where I'm at. So I will not be voting for that surge. And I hope that the scuttlebutt hasn't hurt our recruiting opportunities for the positions now. And then the most important hire that she made, a fellow by the name of Hugh Hattelbaum, was our curriculum developer, I'll let that one out, was the most critical. And he left, she's hired a David Christ, Dr. David Christensen, the guy who's sharp, I am telling you. He, at the very first meeting he attended with us, he spoke about that foundation that's been paid to third grade, and his money and attention and a plan for these young men and women was brilliant. We've gotta give him the road and allow for him to exercise that. So that's kind of where I'm at. And, and that's all I got to say. And that's the end of the presentation. Unless there's any plans.
I just have a comment, unfortunately, it's very positive.
Love it.
Thank you for sharing your strategy, because oftentimes you hear a decision, you say, how in the world did they come up with a decision? I understand a lot better.
Can you stand up so we can hear?
I'm sorry. I appreciate the, very Bill's strategy of how it come, someone came up up to and make his decision, because you also often hear somebody make a decision and say, well, how in the world did they ever come up with that? Thank you, Bill, appreciate that. Big insight that you provided.
Yes, sir.
Bill, could you elaborate on what you mean by fully funding growth?
Growth, fully funded. Within the history of impact fees, and we're gonna need, right now, we're gonna need, by 2020, we will have used up the access student stations. We're gonna need two elementary schools and one high school. That's 30, 30, and 60. So that's where you're going to be. It's $30,000 per elementary and about $60,000 for a high school.
Millions?
Millions, yes.
Okay.
So, so I, I, yeah, right after I was on the board and recognized, we had a Henderson and Young study that said by 2000, 2011, and it said by 2025, we would need those schools. Already, we were ahead of the curve. And so I was sitting back, and I've been fortunate that, if you ever have gone to the villages, I met the Morris family, they came to town a year after I did, and every restaurant up there I've done. So if you wanna go, if you wanna talk to someone who's been successful with a development, how did he fund it? And he said to me, Mr. Morris here, going, said, let me get you in touch with the Dr. Hank Fishkin. Hank, Dr. Fishkin is a world-class economist. He charges $30,000 almost per speaking engagement. And he came, and he didn't come back. His associate Stan Gervra came and spoke to the county commission about how to fund schools without impact fees. And it was MSBU's, it's municipal service benefits, which means that if you live in one of these big developments that's planned for South Lake, within that development, they would pay for the infrastructure, the schools. It could be used for roads, but I don't even talk about the schools. And what happens is, instead of, this is the unfairness of an impact fee. If you move into a new home and you pay $10,000, $292, which is what I proposed, and you sell it a year, and the person buying your house has six kids, they pay no impact fee. The MSBU stays with the property, so it is attached, but it stays with the property over the course of the mortgage, but it sunsets. It ends when it's paid off. That's equitable, and you fully fund it. That's what, that's about. The other is, the other option is, is what we call construction lease backs. I propose that. And by the way, the county commission, their attorney said we couldn't do it, our attorney said we could do it, and it evaporated. That's what happened. The other proposal that I made was that we do construction lease backs. We don't own the building. Let the contractors of these mega developments, let them build the building. We lease it back, we pay for it with our FTEs. At the end of this life cycle, we don't have a dead asset like Dabney, like Leah Dolph. It reverts back to the contractor. That kind of makes sense. The last option, and I've had two meetings about this, is that we would have charter schools. And a charter school would build their own. The downside of charter is, is there are good ones and bad ones, and there is nothing in between. I'm telling you folks, it's terrible. So we have to be very careful about selecting who that is. They can build because they're not bound by the same standards as we are, they can build cheaper. And, and there's interest on the part of two charters. What I pledge to all of you is, as long as I'm on the board, we will not go into debt. That's what I'm saying. And with public pressure, we need to bring the county commission to the table. Mr. Conners, the board chair, said he will not meet with the school board until after the election. That's not acceptable, you know what I mean? It's not acceptable. We have to do work. Right now, I have a bar of the seat that y'all are paying me for, that I need to be doing my job right now, not worrying about an election. So we need to come up with a plan. And that's the push, that was the reason why I pushed the $10,000, $292, was to try and get this off-center and get a discussion going. So does that kind of answer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt.
I'm talking loud, boy.
I'm tired.
Out personnel. I just read the article in the paper the other day about the principal being moved from South Lake. I can see you lost Lake.
I've got you lost Lake, well known forever. And could you elaborate on that?
I'll be very proud of that, to speak about that.
Pardon?
I'll be proud to speak about it. Ron DeHunt was the principal at Lost Lake. And here's what happens. There is some state requirements if a school drops to an F school. Right now, we're looking at Leesburg. The numbers aren't out yet, but the superintendent has a feel for it. Leesburg Elementary, Beverly Shores, and Ustas Heights. Those three potentially will be an F. That means, right off the bat, that means a change in leadership. There's no LIP answer, but that's about it. So the superintendent, and, and there's a criteria of who that administrator can be coming in. They have to be from a high achieving school, some years of experience, and Mrs. Hunt fit that bill. Mrs. Hunt, and I'm just gonna tell you a long story. So Mrs. Hunt comes in, superintendent says, I need for you to go to the school Ustas Heights. And she says yes. She goes, I don't wanna go, but I have a team player, and I will go. Four days later, she called and says, I'm not going. And I've got two years to retire, and I'm staying here. And she started a lobby member. Now, a school board, we have no authority over staff, unless there's really good cause, we have to go along with superintendent. I told y'all a minute ago, superintendent works for us, that's it. She does her staff, and without good cause, we can't object. But Mrs. Hunt felt inclined to get parents to call and emails to come in. And here's how Bill Tobias feels about it. I had a company called Vertishaw when I sold it last year. Had an employee, 65 people, and I had an issue with my management down there. And I fired them. I brought two of my best from Leesburg down there, and they were there almost a year. Had they, had they started calling my customers up here saying, we don't wanna leave, I would have fired them. I told Mrs. Hunt, she, she cornered me a little bit tons up, and told me what I was going to do. And I said, Mrs. Hunt, what I would do, if I could, would be to fire you. That's what I would do. And, and I stand by that. There's conversations about the fact that she had two years left, she had been allowed to retire at her school. When you're paying someone $115,000, you kinda go where you need to go. She was already on the drop, by the way. She had already retired. So she was double dipping. That's the rest of the story. I had no patience with that discussion, I mean, to be honest with you. So that's...
That's, thank you. That, that clears. You know, you just, thank you. You read what's in the paper, and you feel kind of bad for somebody, and you think, is that fair? I wanted the whole story. Thank you. It's too bad you can't get it in the paper, like.
They won't record it.
You can get it on a video.
Bill, I just have a question about when we build these new schools, is there a way to control the costs? And I just, for example, I took a trip to, to Lake Nona last weekend, the veterans hospital. You have this beautiful drive and all this landscaping. The, the building is gorgeous, and I'm thinking, all this money that they spent on this stuff, they could be helping veterans. Now, why, is there a way to keep us from going crazy? I mean, I'm an interior designer, I love these things. You know, there's a, there's a place for it.
There's, your school board has, again, when you look at sustainability, which is what that, what that count needs to look like, and you have elementary schools, and you build middle schools. The new school of the future is a K, or a BPK to eight, combining two enormous savings. So that's standard, and there's a standard design now, already at the district level. When you look at our schools, and I traveled to all of them right after I was elected, and some of them are really, really nice. I mean, they're really nice. But there are some other things that you think are overspent, but are really smart. Like if you notice the schools that were built are brick, expensive on the front end, but way cheaper on the inside, you know? So, so that's right, per upkeep. Because at the end of the, of the warranty with the contractor, then you've got those issues. So there's already that problem. That's been, I forget what that.
Yes, Mr. Yurek?
When Larry Metz was on the board, one of the things they did was they, when they had the lower ranking schools and the rankings came out, they'd bring in the principals for those lower ranking schools and grill them, and have them make a presentation on why that happened and what they're gonna do to fix it. And then what happened is, as you know, I use the term thud management, is once Larry left, thud, that whole process dropped, and I have not seen it since. And my view is that, in the corporate world I was in, if you have a plant that is, is behind their numbers three years, three months in a row, you start having daily phone conversations with them to find out why. And I was the guy in corporations that was sent out to troubleshoot why they were screwing up. Or, and not necessarily they were screwing up, it could be the economy or something, and they didn't know how to analyze it. And, so, but that's all stopped. So what we see is, every meeting you have, it's Engage LCS, we got a new update, and they're talking about the Bill Gates grant, but they don't ever bring in those guys from those low ranking schools and put their feet to the fire. And I, and I know they work for the superintendent, but I can't understand, because the old saying is, what gets watched gets done. And if they're not held accountable, and you've seen a pattern where the superintendent does not seem to hold those people accountable, then they need to have their feet on the fire by bringing them in one every meeting, and talking about it, and a follow-up. By now, you have got a competent auditor to do a follow-up and find out if their plan worked or not.
Following up that answer, that may have been the only meeting you ever missed, where that was discussed at workshop, I think. And I suggest that these low performing schools, and, and I think a C is a low performing, by the way. Can you imagine on this planet that, and I'm gonna give you a quick, I'm gonna block you out of numbers, because I think I did that earlier with all the millions I was looking at. But 40% of our third graders are at their grade level reading. Can you imagine that? 40%? So if you're, that's Lake County. If you can't build, if you're not up to proficiency at third grade, what does that begin to look like as we move forward? It only gets harder. And that's where, and Dr. Christensen, by the way, did all that research, and came back with, that's where we need to build down with the dollars and get the extra help and the horn of war. So to his credit. And so his goal is to, he set out specific goals, but I said, I said C schools, by the way, should be coming in to speak to us. And the, and the pushback was, the board didn't go along with it, let me just say that. I don't wanna talk about the pushback. But they didn't wanna take these principals out of the schools to come in and come before the board. So that one didn't go very far. Yes, sir?
Is that 30, 40% for third graders an average?
That was the...
Or just Lake County?
That's just Lake County.
Okay. What is it, say the national average?
I can't speak enough. I don't know.
The ideal, ballpark?
No. Yes, ma'am.
Why, why do the board members oppose having the principals come in?
It was about the time, taking them out of their schools, having them drive to the district, and it was...
If you're there doing nothing, why should we do that?
But, but let me, let me just say this, this one, this one I do know, and this is a, today Florida's taking a statistic. 40% of our college students have to take remedial math and English right now. And what's, what does the state of Florida do? If you go to a junior college, you're exempt from taking remedial math and English.
Yeah. They just did that this year.
That was August of last year. Yes, sir?
Um, yeah.
Time's up.
Hanging off of Vance's comment about the manufacturing facility that is underperforming. And part of the problem here that is, is I view it, the elephant in the room that nobody wants to tell has peanuts on their breath, is the fact that the raw materials coming into the manufacturing plant are poorly prepared for the manufacturing process. And if the raw materials were just that, you know, raw material, they'd be sent back to the supplier saying, these don't meet our criteria. And that is the, the issue. You know, I've seen that with the companions that my kids go to school with, my ex-wife's a school teacher. I've been in the classrooms, and I've seen it. The problem is the raw materials. People spend more time, parents particularly, it's their responsibility to prepare their kids. It's their responsibility to continue the education... It's their responsibility to continue the education process while they're in the care of the school system. And they spend more time working on their drop step on the hardwood floor or how to run a pass pattern to catch a ball on, on the football gridiron than they do on the basics in the educational process. And you combine that with the substantial behavioral problems that you have. I've heard the anecdotal stories from teachers who cannot speak publicly because they get no support from the administrative staff on the discipline issues in their classrooms. And sure, they have this nice little written policy, uh, but if you, you actually try and send a child for discipline, uh, then you're looked, uh, down upon by the administrative staff and given a hard time. And, you know, you're just supposed to, you know, deal with it because everybody's having to deal with these same disciplinary problems.
Be creative.
The fact of the matter is, if you have a ill-prepared child with a bad raw material who gets, you know, socially promoted up because you don't have a grading process that forces them to stay back in the grade because they didn't make it and they just happen to edge by on the skin of their teeth on some grading, uh, test that they took. And you don't discipline them, you removed all the disciplinary tools from the teachers and the administrators. Guess what? You're gonna get forty percent are competent with their age group because that's probably the amount of parents that actually read the newspaper and provide any semblance of some type of educational influence in their homes. And that's, that's the problem. And why the school board, you know, one out of sixty-seven school boards in the state of Florida has got to get up because I guarantee you, there are five thousand counties in the United States that have the same problem. And that's, that's that raw materials are, are, are clogging up our system. Stop blaming the educational teachers for the problem there. They have their own contributions to it, but they're not the same, you know, the whole problem.
Was there a question in there?
Was there a question there? What are you thinking there?
Let me hit on just a couple of points. You, you, Mark, you, you were spot on about, again, in the, in the data that was presented to us, that those students that do the BPK, which is pre-kindergarten, marked increase in their ability to deal great versus those that just enter kindergarten. So again, the focus has to be to get those students into these, um, pre-K programs because they're not getting what they need at home. The, what we're blessed in Lake County, and where, when you speak about resources, is that we have an amazing pool that hasn't been drawn up, which is retired educators and business people. And to bring those in, the issue is that children aren't being reinforced at home. And that is a social issue because if you look at what Lake County used to be, it used to be agricultural. That there's a, there's a generation where people just didn't go beyond the eighth grade because they worked in the ortruits and so there's no, and if the parent doesn't feel empowered by education, he's not gonna pass that on to his children. So we've got to change that, that, uh, culture. And it's not, that's not an easy task though. And, but we have, we have the resources in Lake County to do it if we're committed to it. I had proposed, as I go to, as I first campaigned two years ago, I came back with realization that it's almost like a two-step back. We have to reach the parents first. I met with Black Ministry Alliance in Eustace. We were gonna have GED programs in their schools on Wednesdays. But that got lost over a gay club thing or a this or that. You get distracted with a lot of stuff, you don't stay on message. That resource and that commitment's still there. At that time, if you remember, there was a fellow by the name of Sandy Carpenter that went for sheriff. And he had a guy by the name of Shaquille O'Neal call through the town. And he, well, he met with the Black Ministry Alliance and said, if you will get the black road out for Sandy Carpenter, we will build free gymnasiums around the county. And in unison, they told him, what we want is learning centers. We don't want kids on the corner playing basketball. So, so the spirit is there within our community. We just need to grab onto it and, and there needs to be leadership to finish that process. But I think we've got to reach the parents. I spoke to a fellow, he runs a hedge fund and came to Lake County and he had between two and eight million dollars invested in various businesses. But he was concerned about our workforce. When I spoke to him about, he lives, by the fact, to the south, right on the Orange County line. And the more we talked, he said to me, what if my vested money was to start feeding kids? He's, he's, um, not Christian, but anyway, he was very interested in church. But he was interested in, what if we did it in elementary schools? So what if our schools could feed kids at Denver? And then also offer GEDs or open them up at night? Well, that'd be amazing to me. And actually, I did even better, quite honestly. Yes, ma'am?
I think, um, I went to the Bay's Avenue Neighborhood Council in Eustace and we did get the middle school, the Kirkright Center, opened up like the GED classes last year.
That's right, y'all were obviously. There's another program in, um, Leesburg, Astrid Kim Scrubs runs it, called Genesis Center. And it is amazing.
Yep, he does a great job.
So you see that you have the talent, it's all about just bringing it all together. But it's all about, you're not going for it when we speak about the raw material, that we've, we've got to have, um, a way to develop that material. It's kind of a matter of luck. And the other thing that's happened with our school system from, again, out somewhere, is there's a flight away from public education. And so where you have homeschool as a real option, and it has become very cohesive in how it works. You have private schools and those are cutting off sort of the cream, if you will, or those parents that are really involved, which is always what middle school work. Now you're left, um, with a hodgepodge that isn't what it could have been had it all been public free. Now, I haven't even had good of, of parent choice, so I'm gonna deal with that. Yes, ma'am?
I certainly agree with his analogy about the raw material. I taught for twenty-four years here. And, you know, I've seen it, all, seen it change. And I agree too that the parents certainly are not doing their bit. But I do, I would like to have seen the school board, the superintendent, set some more stronger guidelines, rules for discipline and to back them up. I thought uniforms would have been great. Not everybody thought that evidently, but something that would give, that just kept them from running wild and being more interested in what they were wearing and who they were seeing and get back to the basics. But we needed, uh, the teachers didn't feel they were being backed up by principals because principals had to answer to the superintendent or the board or whoever. And it was like, nobody, I, I saw it happening where I heard teachers say, I'm not going to do anything, nobody's gonna back me up. You know, it just, it was sad that it got where we are.
But, well, I've got to tell you that on, on a Sunday basis, I hear about teachers being concerned about reprisal. I hear from administrators. And I'm not exactly sure where that culture started or how you ended. Because I don't get a sense about that at, with Dr. Moxley, for example. And she's the, the head of the fish, so it spells bad. But, but if it exists, then it must be real, you know? And, um, there was a comment made when I first was elected, which I don't allow to use anymore, which was, we serve at the will of the board. Meaning if, if I say I want something done, they're gonna make it happen. Now, if they know I'm completely wrong, they're still gonna make it happen. And that happened during this, when we had to get the courtesy busing. And that frosted me. So at a workshop, I said, how about if you tell me the truth? If we weren't ready to get courtesy busing, you should have said that to me, not will of the board. And it went from there to, without even getting, not missing a step, the superintendent goes, well, we need the school board to set our agenda, what we need to be doing. I just said, you folks are working it every day. Just so you know, I sell pots and pans for a living.
Rose hands over to the community.
Each, each one of us has a job and we're there to be a board and a policymaker. Set the agenda for us. Let us look at that and support you. And the superintendent looked at me like I had two hands, but she didn't guide me. So now that there's a change of culture, they're bringing things to us. We're having a dis- a civil discourse about policy. That's what a business should do and that ultimately will change the culture of the board. Where teachers should be empowered to speak up. When we had the class size, um, issue, I guess we should have spoken about that for half a second. Who has a question about that? You could not, that was a situation where...
Can you give an overview of it for those that don't know?
Okay, here, here's what happened. At Minneal High School, my school, we had a teacher who was asked to sign a document that was not truthful. And, um, there was some end, it may have been some reprisal if she did it. And she's, she reported that to the Department of Education and it started an investigation. Now, as it so happened, the two students that she was reporting, actually behind the scenes documentation was correct. And there was no breach of the class size amendment. Set that aside for a second. During all the scuffle, but, and emails to me and counsel from me to the superintendent, I'm sure the board members, that it was bigger than that picture. It was bigger than that one person. And I felt like that it was at least six schools. And as it just kept blossoming, it could have been as many as fifteen that we had violations of class size. I'm gonna stop there and now tell you, Bill, the thought is, thirty-two years of business, I started with five thousand dollars. If I can beat the government all day long, if it is gray, I take the deduction. You know what I'm saying? In this case, those administrators had zero to gain by doing it. But since two thousand and two, we had never knocked that class size. So there was no personal gain to them. But it would mean, if you reported it, that you would have to pay a fine back to Tallahassee, which is about, at one time it was about three thousand, now it's about fifteen hundred dollars a gift. So in their mind, sixty-five thousand, we're not getting our just, we're not getting our just due anyway. So we fudge a number, so be it. Had it ended there, it would have been like, okay with me. The problem is, is that when I ask you to be part of it. If I could fudge the numbers as administrator, if I make you lie, now you crossed the line. That's where I landed on that. And so that's kind of how it sorted out. So now then, without, here was our choices. We could spend up to a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and investigate every, talk to every teacher, talk to every administrator. We could put people and we could chop their heads off in the state. Or we could say, we're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars, which the superintendent did, she was within her purview, and we're gonna find out what the procedure was for it. And let's fix the procedure. That, quite honestly, is what I bought into and I supported it. So the superintendent at her press conference took responsibility for it. We will never know, here's what, here's what I was told by administrators. In my case, I had, um, um, Mrs. Shepherd, who's the principal at Minneal High School, high achieving principal, by the way, high achieving. That she came to administration, not the superintendent, and said, I am over on these people. I had fifteen, sixteen over last year. She was told, go back and make it work. So when I called the person that told her that, that the girl public servant, it was Lori Marshall, she's under the superintendent, I called Lori Marshall and said, Lori, did you ever follow up and see how she made it work? So it was almost like, it's okay, you know what I mean? Like I said, make it work and they never came back. Now, as a board member, here's the impact of Bill Matthias. I would have rather been paid the fine because when we make allocations for teachers and space, we're basing it on cookbooks, you see? So we weren't getting the right numbers. So our allocations, you almost won't even buy, we're always short on our allocations. It's because they never were right. So is that kind of a picture of it? So I wasn't inclined, uh, as some other board members were, to fire or make some big show of it. I was warned, fine, let's get it fixed and let's move forward, which is what we did. Yes, ma'am?
Bill, I understand that one of the fixes is you hire someone that's full, 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 full-time assignment just to make sure that that happened again by a whole person at a, at a very nice salary. This is, that seems so inappropriate to me.
Let me stop you there because this was an amazing story. I was out of the country when they took the vote. This is pretty bad.
Nice trick.
So, so I wouldn't have spoken about it. If I'm under the vote, I'm not gonna speak about what I would have, should have, could have done. But it went through. And I was so pissed off when I got back, just to be quite honest. Because I already told the superintendent privately, I did not, I did not support it. I won't vote, just so y'all know, I won't vote for one more administrative position when we're cutting teachers and we're cutting our school boards. I will not do that. Whatever is needed or not, by the way. And, and it was, it was sold that this person could actually make us money. Like in sales, you have to spend some money to make some money. So anyway, so it went through and I, and, and, um, I looked at the agenda, whether I could get internet connection and I saw it was on there, I'm going, yeah, I'm gonna. Well, I got back and I'm not saying that they did anything. The superintendent, when I got back, she and I talked and apparently it had to be on there so they could hire before the school year started. But what they didn't do is they didn't have the job description with the job. So I'm back at the board meeting now, now I'm back, and the job description comes before the board. And I voted against the job description, which effectively killed the position. Because that was a three-two vote. It went three, three to two against the job description. If you don't have the description, you can't hire the position. So that went away. So it, it, that did not get filled. Anyway, it's a little awkward, you will want to.
He's got all this stuff.
Yes, ma'am?
If, if nothing is done like about a search for a new superintendent next Monday?
Yes, ma'am?
Then when would be the next time that it could come up? Could it come up again after you get the information you were...
Here, here was the, here was already in place how it was going to sort out. The superintendent's contract, I told you it was up next year. In November, every November, we do our evaluation. If her evaluation is at a cer- I don't even know what the number is, but if it's a bad evaluation, that automatically triggers a search, automatically. State of Florida requires it. And that would have told the tale in that orderly process. So, and her evaluation, if, it's public records, mine's online. If you go there, any critique I had was about her staff, not about her, I'm telling you. So those hires were critically, are still critically important for my decision.
Okay.
Yeah. But it should be after the election. And, and again, in August or November, it could be a whole new board, by the way. There's no guarantee, mine's a ROC, there's no guarantee that I will be there. And I would rather have the choice of who I'm gonna be working with the next four years than I'm making that choice, not, not someone that's up for election. I'm just saying, that's just how I feel about it.
All right, Bill.
All right, thanks so much. I'm very grateful.